Has already been evacuated.
And you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. You know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Okay, good morning, everybody. The board, the meeting for August 26th, Board of Supervisors has now begun. Gentlemen, thank you, calling the meeting to order. Let's see, Paul, would you lead us in pledge, please?
I pledge my flag of the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was kind of, that was kind of messy. We got there. Thank you, all right. Madam Chair, are there any corrections or deletions to the agenda?
None that I'm aware of today, Chair.
All right, thank you. Then we're going to move right into the consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and controversial. They're items number one through 18 today. If there are gone any callers who want to make comments, you should be calling in right now. And at this point, I will open public comment on the consent agenda. Any public comment? Any callers?
I'm not seeing any callers, Chair.
Okay. Anyone on the board want to pull any items?
So, Madam Chair, I don't want to pull an item, but I do need to recuse myself from item number one as I'm on the board for the Hospital Foundation.
Okay. So when we take action, any action on the consent? Supervisor Swarthout will be considered? It'll be pulled, pulled, virtual.
It'll be, I'll just recuse myself.
She'll be recused. Is that all right, Kit, if we do it that way?
That's exactly right.
Okay, very good. Then I'll try one more time, since that wasn't a lot of time. Any callers for public comment on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any callers.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Very well. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. No one wants to pull anything, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'd move to approve all consent items except number one. Do we have to pull that?
No, wait, I'll not just.
I'll move to approve all.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Thank you. District five?
Yes.
District four? Excuse me, district two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes, but I recuse myself on item number one.
And district one?
Yes. Thank you, all right. Well done. Now we're going to move on to item number 19. Oh, sorry, public comment first. Regular public comment first, I'm moving too fast. Public comment is open. Members of the public are allowed to address the Board of Supervisors on items not appearing on today's agenda. Each speaker will get three minutes. Please call in as well if you want to call in for your public comment. And anybody on the floor want to make any public comment?
Good morning, Board. I guess the comments are me. I want to bring up the, how much I object to the new ordinance to approve trailers, RVs, campers, as ADUs, in attempt to meet, I believe, the state homeless and low income requirements. I can't believe that the county leaders would come up with such a devastating, unworkable, outrageous plan that impacts its county residents and their well-being. This would impact the beauty, security, and property values that the communities have depended on and enjoyed and the reason for living in God's country. There are better, more effective alternatives than burdening communities, neighbors, and families. To sprinkle the homeless and low-income participants throughout the county would require more costly county services and personnel, such as mental health counseling, job training, health services, first responders, sheriff personnel, transportation, and bringing the people from where they are to their needed support. So there's more buses and vehicle maintenance costs. I doubt that anyone can tell me what we're spending now per homeless. Right now, the point in time count of 2024 was 516 and split evenly between housed and unhoused. The ordinance would have little impact on providing for the less fortunate in our Nevada County. Two, several proven less costly programs, and I'm sure that's quite debatable. Our, to meet this need, are safe sites and tiny homes located on private or county property near the county facilities that provide all the necessary services to bring the needy back into a productive lifestyle. I'm asking you to please reevaluate your current cost course of action and find a better way to support our communities, your constituents, and those in need. The proposed ADU ordinance would not provide the results required and in fact brings up many unintended problems impacting our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Good morning, Supervisors. Tom Durkin, District Four, No Place to Go Project. I want to thank you for the survey that the Community Development Department put out. It was very informative in terms of showing that 72% of the people who answered are in favor of the ordinance. And I think what the opponents of the ordinance seem to fail to realize, we're already here. We're not impacting anything that hasn't already happened. What we're doing is legalizing people who are here. There will not be hordes of homeless people moving here. As far as, we want to continue to emphasize that we need to have a safe camp. As Drenger has mentioned it three times, and we've been promoting this since 2018, and we do have a plan, we have several plans. So that's something we'd like to keep on the agenda maybe for next year. To oppose this ordinance is to ratify the status quo, which is not acceptable. We have people who have jobs who can't find a place to live. So this would only help them get on their, get their lives together, get into housing, and then they can move on once they have a job. So looking forward to the hearing on September 9th, where we can discuss this openly and try to get some of the misinformation that's out there. I've received some very hateful mails, just, they don't know what they're talking about. We hopefully can get people to read the ordinance and begin to understand it. And I do have amendments, but we'll not bring them up right now. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Morning, Chair, Hall, and Supervisors. Thank you for your time here today. My name is Scott Beasley, District Three resident and business owner. If you know me from anything else in town, know that I'm here today on my own, and my opinions are my own. I'm here to bring some attention to critical communications infrastructure during the time of the county fair. Our fair is an institution, it's absolutely amazing. But when you bring 25,000 people to an area that doesn't have the infrastructure to support it, network congestion basically cripples AT&amp;T and Verizon. It's more than an inconvenience, it's a matter of public safety and damages the economy. There were a couple of things that happened during the fair. One was a gentleman disgruntled with a sword in one hand and a baton-like stick in the other hand, was walking down my road, making it clear he was looking for a fight. I couldn't get a call out to 911. Separate from that incident, I heard a rumor there was a pair of failed code reds. Fortunately, they were internal. All of those situations resolved themselves, and everything worked out just fine. But you can imagine how that could have gone, right? I mean, what if it wasn't an internal dispatch? What if it were, I don't know, a shelter in place for an active shooter? What if it were a wildfire evacuation order? What if fire and law couldn't even learn about those events because us residents couldn't get a phone call out during that period of time? Public safety isn't your thing, let me speak to the capitalists in the room. There were 21 trading days in the stock market this month, unless, like me, your office was located on one side of the fairgrounds and your home office was on the other side, in which case you only had 18, because I basically shut my business down because losing calls couldn't place trades, et cetera. So what I'm asking is that the county proactively reach out to do some work with our carriers in the area to get temporary towers in during the fair. I'm not the first person to bring this up. County fair staff is aware of it, but I'm looking for the weight of this group to make something happen. This happens at many other places. So like, two weeks ago, 60,000 people descended on Golden Gate Park to celebrate 60 years of the Grateful Dead with great cellphone coverage. Right now, 80,000 people are forming their own city in the Black Rock Desert with perfect cellphone coverage. So we know this can be done. And if the deadheads and the burners can figure it out, I trust you folks can too as well. So thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Scott. Any callers?
Yes, Chair, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's bring them in, thanks.
Let's bring the caller in, please.
Hi, this is Matthew Coulter, Nevada County. I often laugh too when people bring important communication situations to the county of life and death. It's pretty funny to Ms. Hall, who believes that it's not an issue, as well as the green waste right below her road, Brunswick Road, Greenhorn Road, East Bennett Street, that's been piled up there that cannot be removed for several years because it's not on county property. It's private property, but it's outside the fence, and people continue to park there, camp there, dump there. But she drives by it on a regular basis, and it doesn't seem to be a problem. She probably laughs when she drives by it. I would guarantee it as she laughs about the communication situations. But today, I'd like to speak about the color of authority and the abuse of it here in the county. The continued harassment against me by our local government. The continued denial of service by the DA's office is just outrageous. Where I can be attacked, a extensive police report be handed to the DA with video of me being attacked, and they tell me to go to the Attorney General in Sacramento because they will not serve me in any way, shape, or form. That is our DA's office, which you guys are financing. Very sketchy. I was kicked out of the courthouse the other day, and I was also kicked out of the courthouse before for taking photographs. Now, I was in there with the union, and they were taking photographs, it didn't seem to be an issue. I wasn't allowed to be in the courthouse while a person from the city of Grass Valley was in the courthouse. So that definitely is going to be a problem for me to participate in my own court cases, as well as covering other court cases that are of interest to the community, as well as the Bennett Street fires, for example, that the individual that's charged in the fires doesn't speak English, he needs an interpreter. And I sat in on the court case, and he works for MEC Roofing. Now, you can deny that, Lisa, but it came up multiple times in the case by multiple people. And if Haven wants to deny it, that's fine. But she's hiring illegal workers, having them live in the woods, and then walk the wording fires. They're no longer her employees. So that's pretty bizarre to me, that she's just getting these folks from south of the border and throwing them under the bus when she's done with them. Pretty sad. Very, very sad. And that's MEC Roofing. And, you know, we've got a double standard going on here in the county, and it's so extreme. And when we hear about the housing situation, that is a good example of our double standard. We've got 800-plus thousand-dollar houses that are the standard for the county, and you can't even allow someone to live in a trailer. It's pretty sad. But the squatters are living well. So carry on with the corruption, because we're all watching it, and it's quite entertaining.
Thank you. Public comment here in the chambers? Any other callers?
There's no other callers, Chair.
Okay. All right, we're going to close public comment. And now we're going to go on to Department Head Matters, item number 19. Information and General Services. It's a resolution approving a budget amendment for the animal shelter budget. And actually, we're going to, you're going to present on all three items, A, B, and C, correct? And then we'll take public comment on all three items. So we'll go through each of those items first, and then we'll go to public comment. All right? Go ahead, thanks, Craig.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Hall, and members of the board. Craig Gruessbach, your Director of Information and General Services. Partnering with me on this presentation this morning, to my right is Lori Hennessy, who's administrative analyst in OAS, and plays the lead role in managing the animal shelter services contract and the associated services there, too. Also joining us this morning in support of this item, to my left, is Stacy Broderick, who's the president of the Sammy's Friends Board, and Emily Hornick, who's animal shelter manager for Sammy's Friends. The partnership and engagement over the last several months has made the recommendations before you possible that really puts our community and animals first. Since 2010, the county and Sammy's Friends have partnered to operate the Nevada County Animal Shelter. We have leaned in together over the years as we have encountered the many challenges and successes of operating this core community service. Through that experience, we've identified an adapted operational approach that is before you today. At your June 24th board meeting, our team presented a three-month contract extension with Sammy's Friends to operate the Nevada County Animal Shelter. The intent of this was to allow us enough time to explore opportunities for an updated operational model and return to your board for consideration. This model before you maximizes organizational strengths for the county to resume day-to-day operations, while Sammy's Friends continues to provide technical wraparound services that enhance outcomes for both animals and our residents. This leverages an approach of county staff providing mandated animal sheltering core services, while Sammy's Friends has the ability to provide enhanced community services through the work of their nonprofit organization. I would now like to hand this off to Lori to provide a high-level overview of the specific items that are in front of you today. Lori?
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Chair, Hall, and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to present these three items to you today. First, as we work through transition planning, and have been, it has become clear that one additional month beyond the original three-month extension is needed with Sammy's Friends. The one-month extension will allow the county to assume shelter operations on November 1st, 2025. This additional time will ensure a smooth and uninterrupted transition for both the county and Sammy's Friends. That would include hiring and onboarding staff. The second item we bring forward to you today is the proposed Supportive Animal Shelter Services Contract with Sammy's Friends to provide associated sheltering wraparound services. This agreement establishes a new relationship that builds on the strength of both organizations. The county will assume primary responsibility for shelter operations with in-house resources, while Sammy's Friends will continue to provide expertise and volunteers, fosters, adoptions, events, and fundraising. By aligning resources and experience in this way, we can better serve both animals and residents with high-quality, sustainable services. This contract before you totals 110,422 for the period from November 1st, 2025, to July 30th, 2026, and is included in the proposed budget included in this package before you today. Lastly, to support this adapted operational model, we are requesting approval of a budget amendment to align appropriations with shared responsibilities. This amendment accurately reflects the financial impact of moving from a fully contracted operation to a shared services model while ensuring transparency, fiscal accountability, and continuity of care. This budget proposal was reviewed with the Budget Subcommittee on July 21st, and from there was recommended to move it forward to the full board for review and approval. The increase to this proposed budget is 380,529, with a general impact of 270,529. That supports the shared services model and funds five full-time and two part-time employees to run the shelter. This is a lean and efficient staffing model to provide a mandated sheltering core service for our community. I'll now hand it back to Craig to wrap up the presentation, and I thank you for your time.
So to recap the items that are in front of you for consideration today, these items include a one-month extension to the fiscal year 2425 contract with Sammy's Friends, provide full animal sheltering services until October 31st, an animal sheltering supportive services contract with Sammy's Friends to provide wraparound services from November 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026. And last but not least, the animal shelter budget amendment supporting the proposed adapted operational model of animal sheltering services. Appreciate your time this morning and discuss this with you. That concludes our presentation. We'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to look to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Lisa, I'll start with you.
Any questions?
No? Sue? Okay, Rob? Hardy? Okay. Okay, we'll go to public comment. Any public comment on any of these three items?
Thank you. Good morning. So my name is Joyce Chan. I have been a volunteer at Sammy's Shelter and at the Sammy's Nifty Thrift Shop for several years now. And I've been given the privilege of also joining the board of Sammy's very recently. I am here to endorse the proposed contract under review, and I see this as a good first step in this continuing partnership between Nevada County and Sammy's. It's an opportunity to support the Nevada County community, but also, most importantly, support the animals. We are all aware that the universal issues of animal welfare and overpopulation is not going away. And the current situation for Sammy's has been untenable for some time, whereas we had been operating under a set budget provided by the county, and we thank you for that, without consideration, unfortunately, of the increasing and increasing numbers of all types of animals we have to take in. We hope, and my hope, is that this evolving partnership will allow each party to leverage their skills and community network to address both the acute and chronic issues. I want to emphasize today that my hope is that this is an evolving relationship. We can't continue to adopt our way out of the problem. We can use this transitionary contract proposal to see how this experiment will play out, work out the kinks that we encounter, because that will happen, and come back again in the summer of 2026 with a stronger proposal that both sides can agree to. Personally, I look forward to this new version of Sammy's, what I'm calling Sammy's 3.0, and I ask our very supportive community to continue to support us, volunteer with us, and have patience with us as we all try our best to do what's best for the animals off Nevada County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other public comment in the chambers? Any callers?
Yes, Chair, we have one caller.
Okay, and can we make sure the clock, the automatic turnoff is functional?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, let's take the caller.
Can we bring the caller in, please?
Hi, Ms. Hall, automatic cutoff. I know you love that feature, and you'll utilize it to your advantage. On the animal shelter, I'm not sure, can you hear me? I don't know, it's just a blank audio. Can anyone hear me? Am I on?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, I never know, because of the way the system is set up. On the animal shelter, the Grass Valley Animal Shelter is, if anyone is not aware, positioned directly next to the sewage treatment plant. When they put in the Wolf Creek Trail, they took away the animal exercise yard, took that piece of land, and it's never been replaced. The smell, as well as the fact that the police gun range is right next door also, so the noise. And then we go to the county shelter. We've got, it's out of the dump or the transfer station. It's an industrial site, it smells, and it's very noisy. I think when you guys bring up the shelter and the people that are promoting it, Lisa, you think you're the lead on this, it should be talked about. It should be talked about that the new shelter is going in, it's being planned, it's being talked about. You've already got the land. And, because at this point, we're just torturing animals. And we're taking them in if we can't adopt them out. I mean, some have been there over 300 days. Can you imagine living at the sewage treatment plant for 300 days? And this is a sewage treatment plant that's And this is a sewage treatment plant that's, you know, failed and fine and just a mess. So really, consider stepping up your game, because when you guys wanted to, when I say "you guys," I'm talking about our local government, wanted to move our animal shelter to Placer County, and what a stupid idea that was, and the turnout of the community to save Sammy's Friends was evident that we have the support. We just don't have the will in our local government to do it. So you guys are holding us back from getting a shelter that is a real shelter, not a temporary shelter that was made to drop a dog off overnight and be picked up the next day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on that, Craig?
Our team is actively working hand-in-hand with Supervisor Swarthout and several other partners, including continuing discussions with Grass Valley on planning the new animal shelter that we do own the property for. So right now, we're working on retooling and making it, trying to get it to a more achievable cost for us to be able to build for our community. So that is coming, and it's a priority.
Great. I don't see any other public comment in the chamber, so I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any final questions or comments? Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, I just want to thank everybody involved. I know this has been a long and arduous process to get here, but I really do think that this is the best solution for all of us. I really appreciate the collaboration and cooperation with everybody from Sammy's Friends. Having been involved with them years ago as a board member, it's a great organization. You do wonderful things for the animals and our community, and I just look forward to this partnership of moving forward. And just another note, when we talk about being proactive, we will be starting our Community Spay and Neuter Program. The county is committed to trying to spay and neuter as many animals as possible for people who unfortunately can't afford to spay and neuter their pets. So September, maybe, Lori, is what we're looking at now. And again, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that. I didn't realize how complicated spay and neuter clinics can be until I started really looking into it. So thank you all for the cooperation, collaboration, and we will get to a new shelter, hopefully, within the next few years, because that is really a priority for the county right now.
No, I think Lisa said it all, so I think that's fantastic. And, you know, it takes a village, right? We all have been talking about that. None of us, we can't do it alone. It takes a group to make this all happen, and I love that the cooperation is happening. So thank you all for that. Lots of love and passion goes into this program, and we see that with all the different 501(c)(3) that work with animals and critters. It's kind of amazing. But I'm back with that spay and neuter program. I really look forward to having that help, because that really is the answer. It is the answer. If you are, you know, can't afford, you've got to choose between groceries and spaying your animals. It's a very challenging thing, and animals are something that gives you peace and contentment. Sometimes they're your friend, they don't talk back. They generally don't bite the hand that feeds them, right? And so those are such an important part of our community and what makes this all function. So thank you guys all so much for this work.
Yeah, thank you for that. I don't really have a lot to offer. I think it was stated well that this feels like a little bit of an interim step type of thing, and there's going to be a lot of, you know, evolving processes as we go forward, and even the resolutions are exactly that. They're sort of interim. So, yeah, it's a complex issue. We've got mandated services and the community, so I appreciate all the work that's been put into it. I will, on a side note, and this isn't directed at Sammy's, you know, this is adding six employees to, you know, the county payroll. Kind of going back to the whole budget process, you know, we added 24, now we're over 30. Not saying that this isn't appropriate in this situation, but I think it just speaks to the fact that with the whole budget process and the amount of employees, there's a lot of contract services that maybe sometimes isn't counted in the growth of the employees over the years. But anyways, that's a different subject for a different time. As far as this, I think this is the right course of action at this point, and I'll look forward to the ongoing discussion in the coming years, probably, as we figure out how this works. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to Sammy's Friends for the volunteer efforts and the work and all the passion you put into caring for animals. It's definitely important in our community. I a little bit echo Supervisor Tucker's comments that in tightening budget periods, it's definitely, we're going to be facing changes in the amount of money that we can spend on different services, and so trying to leverage all the benefit in volunteers such as yourself, and thanks for taking the time. I know our community cares a lot about animals. We have all these other priorities, right? Food insecurity and mental behavioral health and wellness and homelessness and all these other priorities that other people are very, very passionate about, and I really respect your passion for this topic, but I think we do need to understand the context and understand that we're going to need to leverage a lot of volunteer activity and a lot of help, and I, Supervisor Swarthout, and really commend you for doing the spay and neuter program, because I think that's kind of treating the source of the problem, not necessarily the symptom of the problem. But, you know, I do hold our community responsible, and I sat down with Stephanie Nissler of the Humane Society in Truckee and kind of talked to her a little bit about our, the way we handle things in West County versus East County, and she said the problem is, it's definitely a considerable problem. There's additional adoptions constantly taking place, and people are relying more on facilities where they can bring their animals in and drop them off. It's saddening for me to hear that, and I think people frankly should be held responsible, and I think that they should be held accountable for that. You know, we're doing what we can with this interim step, like Supervisor Tucker mentioned, but I'm going to look critically at the next contract that comes before us for cost and benefit and how we're going to make it all work within the kind of tightening budget timeframe. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks to my colleagues for raising all the issues that we always have to look at, but great, huge thank you to Sammy's Friends for continuing to engage in this, to staff. Lori, I hear you did an amazing job going through the contract, so thank you for that, and Supervisor Swarthout, who's been working on this for a really long time. So thanks. Glad to see us at this place where we have an interim solution and look forward to the conversations going on further. So unless there's any other final comments, I'm going to look for, motion and a second for each separate item. So we're starting with 19A, the budget amendment for the animal shelter budget. I'm looking for a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
District 4. Oh. Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thank you. Now we're going to go to item 19B, the resolution for the one-month extension, please. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Madam Clerk?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thank you. And 19C, the resolution for the contract for the shelter services for the coming year.
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your hall, all your hard work. Thanks for coming down to be here, folks. Okay, we're going to move on to item 20A, resolution, actually, 20A and B, resolution amending the personnel staffing resolutions. Susan Kaderah, thank you for walking us through this. And this one, also, we're going to be, you're going to be describing both of these items, and then we'll take public comment at one time, and then we'll vote on them separately. So thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hall and members of the board. I am Susan Kaderah, your interim Human Resources Director, and today I am bringing the staffing and the salary resolutions to you for your consideration. Human Resources routinely provides you these documents for your review and approval, and today is no exception. The reason that I'm here is to note on the staffing resolution, the addition of six positions which will support the animal shelter operations, one animal shelter supervisor, four kennel attendants, and one senior office assistant. And so those will be recruited for, pending on your approval, to help support the operations of the animal shelter. We've carefully considered what positions are needed, what we can afford, and these are the six that we present to you. And relatedly, on the salary resolution, every time we make a change or a recommendation to you regarding job titles, we must make a corresponding change on the salary resolution to ensure that we list the job title and assign a salary range to it. So notably, for the animal shelter supervisor, which is a brand-new classification for the county, and the kennel attendant, which is a resurrected job title for us, we've recommended and assigned salary range for them. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions by the board? Sue? I mean, Lisa? Sue? Rob?
Just a quick clarifying question. There was a number of different positions from other departments, that there was additions and deletions and so on and so forth, but really, if you kind of net those out, it's really the six.
Yes, thank you very much.
For animal services that we're talking about. All the other ones were just kind of administrative.
Yes, thank you. Every time we come forward with a staffing resolution, we have a number of routine changes that are for your consideration, and I should have included those in the commentary there for your consideration as well. But again, the net additions are reflective of the animal shelter operations.
Okay, so public comment on this item. I don't see, folks in the chambers, anybody calling in.
Yes, Chair, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's take it. Thank you.
May we bring the caller in, please?
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Anyone? Oh, very good. This is Matthew Coulter, coming on the Human Resource, new employees. I'm not sure if Steve Rose is still there, but basically, I stopped going in there, because I would fill out forms, speak personally with him about employees of the county doing, really, criminal activity, and I never once received a call back, a follow-up, anything. And I even called the follow-up on some of these things. So I'm hoping the Human Resources Department can be run better, because there's definitely a lot of dead weight in the county, and when we hear that they're hiring six new, I'm very impressed with a lot of the new employees. They seem motivated. Some of the ones that are just riding it out to retirement are doing just that, just riding it out to retirement and not really participating in not only their job, but in our community. So I guess my question is, who do I talk to at Human Resources to actually make a report and get feedback from that report to see if anything is being done about a specific employee or a group of employees or a department, for that matter? Thank you.
Thanks. That wasn't very specific to the item, but let's see if it looks like, Allison, you wanted to address that.
No, absolutely. Mr. Coulter could elevate any issues to our interim director, Susan Kaderah. So Matthew, if you're listening, feel free to reach out by calling the department or coming by and asking for Susan.
All right. No, any other public comment? Any other callers?
No more callers, Chair.
Okay. Closing public comment. So now I'm going to be looking for two motions. First one for 20A, the resolution, Stephen Resolution 23326. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Madam Clerk?
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thank you. Item 20B, the resolution 25327. Motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Okay, that got done. Thank you, Susan. And Craig? Okay, we are through, I believe, the public part of the agenda today, very short meeting. We are going to do announcements, and then we'll have Kit read us into closed session. So who would like to start with announcements?
I was going to save most for next time, but I'm excited for the ribbon cutting on Friday for the new multi-use path down there in the Comby Road. So that'll be Friday, and I already see people out there using it, so nice to see that addition to the community on there. That's it for now.
I can go if you want. Excuse me. Just thanks for everybody coming up at the Truckee meeting. It was nice to be up there and see Eastern County, and I had some conversations afterwards, and many people that weren't in the meeting were watching the meeting, so I just wanted to let my colleagues know that people in East County care, and I think it was great to go visit the Joseph, oops, I'm sorry. I'm going to actually pull this right over to me. Joseph Center, our staff members, it's great to see the board up there. The day after that, we went to, I don't know the name of it, but a leadership, county leadership. My friend Dan Streetman's the CEO for Tanium, which is a big software company, so he came down, did a conversation about the why of leadership for the county, and so I attended that, sat in. It was really fun to see that, talk to our staff members about leadership. Always inspirational for me, and I'm always kind of in that constant learning phase with leadership, and Dan kind of reiterated that for us, so it was fun to see him there and see all of our up-and-coming leaders here at the county. We had our ad hoc for clerk recorder, register our voters. Supervisor Hook and I formulated the final question, questions for the panel interviews, and those are coming up here next week. Yeah, coming up on us pretty quick. I have been really deep into T.HAC, Truckee Town Homeless Advisory Committee. We changed the name. I can't recall exactly what that committee's called now, but it's still T.HAC, but it's Commission, maybe. We have a lot of activity going on, trying to figure out a navigation center. Ryan's been instrumental in providing a bunch of information, a bunch of different information to stakeholders, like the hospital, the town, the county, and others. So we have another public meeting. We had our first public meeting where we had about 60 participants from the community come in, talked to us about what they'd like to see, how they believe the county may work with, work with them and work with other people in the homeless community, so going well there. I was down in Mammoth, and I don't know if you remember John Wentworth, who came to our meeting, who we talked about the ERP resolution that we formulated, but John has made all these trails down there, and there's signs everywhere, and they have the most awesome trail system. Anyway, this is just a plug for trails, because I rode my bike all the way around the town. There's these signs like, hey, downtown, river, and view and vista, and, you know, it's just, really integrates how the community can circle around without a car and take in the natural environment. So I think if we can keep moving toward, and I had a great meeting with Tricia, actually, just talking about integration with Caltrans and with Supervisor Tucker and I during the rec ad hoc, talking about signs and how to get people from here to downtown, about a city, to the Hurstman Trail, to other different places. So trails and signs, pretty interesting in our community, they've done an excellent job. So if you're near Mammoth, please swing in and look at that. Tour of the Placer County Shooting Range yesterday, interesting. And then, I think we all did, and then had our AQMD meeting, Air Quality Management District. They have a bunch of grants for portable air shelters. So if anybody is listening and you want to host a portable air shelter to make clean air in times of difficult, you know, smoke or other wildfire pieces, please contact us or call AQMD, and you can get a clean water, or air purifier for your, for your space. Rob and I had the rec ad hoc, again, had an airport meeting, talked a little bit about the Grass Valley Airport, Nevada County Airport, and I'm sorry, I can't make the ribbon cutting. I'm out of town, but I wish you guys the best of luck, and that's been, I think that's a project that I've seen since, you know, since I've been here, so it's pretty cool to see it done. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to just comment, the Truckee board meeting was fun, and I really appreciate the effort that went into taking us to the different, it would just be great to go down to Joseph Center, the library, and just meet up with the folks that work there. So I appreciated the work that went into doing that. I would like to do that and have a little more, I mean, we went, there's a lot to see there. You don't think of that, but there is. So thanks again for doing that. So same, we've been our clerk recorder, ad hoc, and in that, I was asked to go So same, we've been our clerk recorder, ad hoc, and in that I was asked to go do a media with League of Women Voters, and that was good. It was, there was some confusion between one of our resolutions and what was really happening with our clerk recorder, so we worked on that, and that was great. I think that was well-received. Looking forward to that and letting people know that it is going to be an open meeting here in the board chambers when we select our new clerk recorder, so that will be coming. We had our South Yuba cohort meeting, well-attended by, I think everyone's really engaged in how are we going to manage what's happening at our river. It is, it's challenging at best when we're overcrowded, parking, the same things, but what are the real answers? So especially with enforcement, right? It's supposed to be a fun place, but you still have to enforce, but we still have dangerous things happening, and we haven't got rescuers on scene, and I think that's been a challenge with some of our firefighter groups that go on rescues. If they're out there, they're not home when there could be a fire or any of those things. So there's been some challenges with that, with the dollars spent doing that. Was interesting conversation. This is going to be a big weekend, Labor Day weekend, and so they're kind of, and you'll see there's some media reports on that as well, especially with the OHV or whatever it is, you know, especially a little town of Washington really gets inundated with that. So that's been interesting. I had a great meeting with, I had an AT&amp;T check-in, because you know, I'm always challenged with some of the mapping and stuff that's going on with ATT, that legislation is still making its way through, and I just want to remind people, if you are challenged and they've been telling you cannot have a phone, please call me, and we'll elevate it. I got two new people phones last, in the last two weeks. That is their responsibility. They are the carrier of last resort. Do not let them tell you you cannot have a phone in Nevada County. There are a few little dead zone areas, but very few. And so I continue to work on that and advocate for you all, and if you're having trouble with service, because that's another thing I've had people reach out to me, they'll tell me they're three weeks out before they can fix their phones. That is not correct. So please, take the time, call, and then if you are having that challenge, I encourage you to do complaints with the CPUC. That's the only way we're going to get ahead of this and stay protected with, very important thing that we have is the landlines. Regional Housing Authority meeting last week. Nothing too exciting to report there. Wheatland is almost done, there's a housing project there, and of course, our Lone Oak Project here is, that's probably the biggest thing I'm just getting more excited for, just looking, there's a little slow up on some of HCD funding, but I'm, I feel confident that we're going to break ground on that soon. I had a great meeting with the, for Sustainability Summit. I met with my panel, and it was really kind of fun to talk about what direction we're going to go with what questions and how we can engage with the community and, and really bring some education of what's happening in our rural areas as far as watershed and accountability for the land, right, and how we work, and, and the importance of agriculture that plays in that. So that was great. I went on the range tour, was really good. I, I've been there, I would love to go check out Sacramento sometime, I think well-needed facility for our, our officers and probation. Be well-used here, I think it would fit. I went to our community center meeting, which was great, and they're having their fundraisers coming up, Black Hats and Silver Spurs on September 20th, so if you haven't got your tickets, you can go on their website and get those purchased. It's going to be a lot of fun, we're excited. Our application's going through planning right now, and we just can't hardly wait to break ground on that event center. Went to Rough and Ready Fire, it was great. Of course, we have our ad hoc working on that issue. It's great to see the involvement in the community. It was so hot that day, I thought I was going to melt, but it went, and the place was packed. That little community is really coming together. It was very exciting to see that. They, they appreciate everything the county's been doing as far as having those conversations, and, and they're actually really, really engaged, and I think that's, it's, it's just fun to see that kind of work going on. RCRC, that was a full meeting last week. Lots of highlights in that. I think the guest speaker, though, was interesting. Carrie Brownstein, she's the Executive Director for County Medical Services Program, CMSP, and Lee Kemper, the Planning and Policy Consultant, were there and kind of gave an overview of where we are and where we're going in the next year with some of the changes, and it was, it put a lot of things into context. It was really good, and if anybody's interested, I have the presentation, and, and they're actually willing to come and do presentations to different counties if they're interested. So that was, that was probably a, a great highlight. Golden State Connect, things are still moving forward there, looking for that funding still to come, for that funding to keep rolling in, and hopefully, I mean, we know it's kind of slowed down. Golden State Natural Resources, that meeting, we have some changes of what's happening there. Gone away from shipping pellets to looking at a biomass facility, so there's a lot going on with that. GSFA, the financial side of things, it's always exciting, they have that down payment assistant program there and the loan schedule, and that's really could be a benefit for folks here in our county, for county employees. So if anybody's interested in that, you can look in that more. And I think that's it. Oh, LAFCO, we had a LAFCO meeting, but it was probably the shortest LAFCO meeting on record, so there wasn't a lot to go over, and so that was quick, but that was good. So I think that's all I have. Okay, yeah, LAFCO, 18 minutes. Loved it. So I had my regular scheduled meeting with the city manager and the mayor last week, just talking about some of the things that are going on in the City of Grass Valley. I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Loma Rica Ranch housing development a couple weeks ago, and the burning question that everybody had is how big are they and what's the cost? So that information is out there. I will tell you that I didn't get the total square footage, but we did, they have two model homes that you can tour, and I believe they started around $575,000, if anybody that answers their questions. They are, their models are open every day, I believe, from like 10 to 6, so people can go over and check it out. It's going to be a nice new neighborhood for the City of Grass Valley. I attended the Airport Commission meeting. I had lunch a couple weeks ago with Yolanda Cookson, Megan Dolly's field rep for Nevada County, just kind of, she was filling me in on some of the things that are happening at the state level right now. I also attended a reception for the new owners of the Holbrook and the National, so the, what has changed hands is actual ownership of the properties themselves. They are still both being operated by ACME, which has been the operator there since, since they reopened. The new owners are very, was very nice. He is a hotel guy out of the East Coast, and he's very, very committed to Nevada County and to making, you know, making sure that those, those spots are really successful. I attended the Episcopal Church in Grass Valley, their 170th anniversary. It was really wonderful to, they had a canon from Canterbury who came and spoke. It was very interesting to listen to kind of how the Episcopal Church was started in Grass Valley and that it's, it's maintained itself for 170 years. You don't see that very often. I filled in for Allison on KNCO last week with Tom Fitzsimmons and Patrick and Carla Holscroft, who was the woman who was instrumental in getting the federal designations for the North Star House, and just listening to her, and I've, I've heard her speak before on the history of both Julia Morgan and Mary Halick-Foot, who, the Foots were the people who lived in the home and the work that they have done, and it's, it's really inspiring that we're going to see that have some federal designation now. And a big thank you to the North Star Foundation, the people who've really worked hard to restore that facility and use it in the community as a community space. I attended the Grass Valley City Council meeting on the 12th. They had a discussion about some of their goals and objectives. Several of them involve collaboration and partnerships with the county. I will continue to monitor those. And then I also attended the LAFCO meeting, which was one of my favorites, that lasted 18 minutes, but the application, so they are seeking a new executive director for LAFCO. S. Jones will be retiring next year, and I believe applications are still open for that position there. Yes, no, yeah, yeah, thank you. So if anybody's interested in applying for that job, they can go onto the county's website and, and seek the informa, no, the LAFCO website, yeah, and seek the information. So thank God you guys are there prompting me. So that's it. Thanks. Thank you. Yep, my, I think my list is relatively short, so yes, also thank you for the Truckee meeting. It was, it's always great to be up there, great to take a tour and get to know the area better. Huge thank you to the Joseph Center staff, the huge number of them turned out to just introduce themselves to us and tell us a little bit about what they do. Appreciate that, they made that huge effort. We'll be going back up there in October and look forward between now and then to making sure that we make it as useful as possible for folks up there, that we learn as much as we can while we're there, and yeah, that we can do some tours to, to help familiarize ourself with Eastern County. That's always an education challenge, because we spend all of our time here in West County, so appreciate everyone's efforts to make that, that meeting work. I also did the Shooting Range Tour, which was fascinating. I think we all ended up doing that, but really interesting to see the complexity of how that functions and how the scheduling challenges they have, and really looking forward to us bringing that forward here so that we can have something like that here in our county for our law enforcement personnel. I also went to the reception for the new owners at the hotel. It was a huge turnout. You must've come late.
You did the National, I did the whole.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah. It's great that they want to be engaged, and people care a lot. It was a huge turnout about making sure that those hotels stay functional and work for the community. Had the Air Quality Management District Board, District Meeting on ledge, same, thanks for raising that, Sue. So we're, I'm also still tracking the fire insurance issue, which I haven't talked about much lately, but there are bills, both in the federal and state level, that, the state one especially would address some of the issues we've been raising. The federal level bill is still quite open, but you know, we've made some impact there, so waiting to see how that moves forward, and I'll brief everyone. Chris's and Mandy have been doing a great job on that stuff, and we'll bring some more information back when we have information on that, but thanks for that work. I, let's see, yes, oh, yesterday, no, Sunday, went to our Greater Summit Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, which I've attended every year for the last, I don't know how many years. They've moved it over to a beautiful location in Cedar Song Road. Had the opportunity to share county news, starting with the budget and all the upcoming issues we have, had some really great questions and great interactions with my constituents out there. It's just one of the best ways for me to connect with folks, so want to encourage them to keep doing that. Will reach out to staff. There was a lot of interest, again, in the psychiatric facility that we're talking about building here. I know we've done a lot of outreach early, but that, you know, maybe people are more aware now, so we're offered, we may be offering to go back out there to that community and, and provide more information. And then I had the NACO, the National Association of Counties, did make their appointments, and I've been appointed to the Justice of Public Safety Committee Leadership now, so that's a committee I was on earlier, and I'm now in the leadership, which is, they deal with issues that affect the courts mostly, as well as homeland security, which is emergency response issues. So that's where we're trying to impact what's happening at the federal level with FEMA, making sure they continue to take into consideration the reforms that we need, but not eliminate the organization. So that work that I'm doing is all a function of that committee. I'm also on the rural, but I, one of the rural caucuses, which I've continued to be on as well, where we deal with all rural issues like RCRC does. So pleased to be continuing to do that work. Hardy, I think you've got an appointment, too, so you might.
Yeah, Rural Caucus and also Vice Chair of Recreation.
Yeah, so Hardy is also Vice Chair of Recreation in the Public Lands Committee, so we're continuing to, to be involved at that level. And I think that's it for me. So any last, yeah, go ahead, Sue. I do, I almost forgot. Exciting, except for Truckee, Pacific Commons. Yeah, so the, all the groundwork is being done, the, you know, the plumbing and all that exciting stuff, and about mid-September, we're going to see the pods come in. So it's going to be exciting. It's kind of a tight area there, so they're going to have to store them and then move them as they put them up, but it only is about a 10-day period, and all the blocks will be in place, so stay tuned. That's pretty exciting. That's 55 units that's going into there, and so if you know where Dairy Queen is, it's across the street from Dairy Queen.
Yeah. Sue, do you think maybe with your connections on HCD, we could talk about maybe doing a tour there for the Truckee visit?
Yeah, I think that would be fabulous, so.
Yeah.
Regional Housing Authority is, yeah.
I'm sorry, Regional Housing Authority.
So, yeah, because we're all excited about it. They just finished one similarly in Wheatland, and I drove by and checked that one out the other day, and it's actually quite lovely. They think they put 31 units there. So anyway, it's, I'm, I'm excited to see this one go up, and it, really, it'd be all locked in place before winter hits in, in Truckee, so anyway, I can't believe I forgot to tell you that, because that's probably one of the most exciting things. It was fun while we were at your meeting, we drove by and I checked it out, because if you're going over the hospital, Patrick took us on an adventure going to our meeting, so we sight-seeded, it was quite great, but we went by there, and so anyway, excited to see that happen in Truckee.
Can I mention one thing on that? Yeah, it's interesting you bring that up. The state of California was so nimble in their conveyance of that land for housing purposes, and I, I don't want to poke at the Forest Service, but we tried for years to try and get the Forest Service admin site to get some housing built out at Hobart, and the state of California closed the CHP Center, built a new one, and gave the land immediately for housing, and I, I have to, I have to, you know, provide some sort of support and kudos for that, because it, they did the right thing, and it's right there in Truckee, centered to the, you know, we have 10, I think we have eight or 10 supportive units in that building, Nevada County, 10? Thank you. Yes, it's cool. And then what?
Yeah, and it's just right where everything is.
That's right there.
The grocery store, the services, hospitals, like a hop and a skip and a jump, the library.
And it actually meets the Town of Truckee's infill requirement in their general plan 2040, which is cool. Well, one, Chair Hall brought up one piece on the B-Chip project, I was wondering, is there going to be a staff report soon about the progress on B-Chip?
Let me check in with staff, and then I'll work with Chair Hall, and we could bring either informational item in the next month. I believe we may have a contract coming forward as well, where we can incorporate a update.
Great, and I had one more thing. I knew there was one more thing. For the public, I just want to remind the public that comment is still open for the RV ordinance, and I want to just, just remind people of the context. So we did a survey, staff did a survey, we've taken in dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, or I'm not sure exactly how many comments, lots of comments we got back on the survey and your emails, and then that, the ordinance was crafted in response to the sub-board direction and the emails we got. So what's out there now is reflective of the best job we could do, taking into account people's desires and concerns. So the comments, we're now looking for comment on the ordinance, so I'd like to recommend that people take a quick look at that ordinance before they send in their comments. A lot of the comments we're getting now, previous a lot were, that I was getting, were very supportive. Since then, the comments are, you know, sharing their concerns, and many of those concerns are addressed in the draft ordinance. So please do take a look at it to make your comments most useful, and let us know what you think, and then that will be coming before the board September 9.
I think there's a town hall coming, too, Heidi.
And there's a town hall, right, yeah. So if anybody can find the date for me really quick, we can announce. We'll look on, while they're looking, you can check our.
I don't think it's coming on September 9. Maybe an update is coming, but the ordinance is coming.
Yes.
We can be at our announcement meeting, too.
Okay, taking one minute to get the dates right here for the workshop, and then when it'll come to the board.
Staff has informed me that it's November 4.
November 4, okay. And then the workshop, do we have a date on that? Patrick, I see you. Sorry, I should have looked, put that in my notes.
September 9.
That's the one.
Appreciate the help from our audience.
September 9 will be the workshop, where there'll be another discussion with the ordinance presented, so everyone's welcome to attend that. Where will that be?
The Vets Hall.
The Vets Hall?
In Grass Valley.
Grass Valley?
Grass Valley.
Vets Hall, the Grass Valley Vets Hall.
And we'll make sure, we'll work with our public information team and push out that information widely versus our media outlets as well as social.
Great, yep, and we'll get that, yeah, so be on my social as well. So we do invite your, your comments at September 9. It will come before the boards at November 4. Please, if you can, read the ordinance and focus your comments on that so we can get the most, make, make our decisions the most useful with your input. So thank you. I think it's going to be heard at our Municipal Advisory Commission.
I think it's going to be heard at our Municipal Advisory Commission mine is, which is after the town hall, so there is that opportunity as well for Pin Valley. But we haven't set the date yet.
Okay, any other last minute? Okay, then.
These are busy people.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to, I'm going to ask Kit to read us the board into closed session and then we will only come back to read out, otherwise the meeting is essentially over for the public.
I'm sorry, did you want to go to the CEO? I think she had a few.
I'm sorry, CEO. Allison, you were on vacation.
Happy to give a couple updates. Well, one of the best parts of my job is I get to go out in the field with staff and to job shadow. And so this past month, I was able to job shadow our staff at WIG, Women Infant Children's Services. So it's just a reminder of the important services that they provide in terms of nutrition for new moms and their children under the age of five, as well as breastfeeding support and then also just the continuity care with the many resources, such as the hospital that we have in the community. So I extend this invitation to the board. If you ever would like to go out in the field and job shadow, it's worthwhile. It really helps inform in terms of the direct service that we provide and then how can we best support them. I met with Barbara Larson and again, she extends an invitation to the board members on October 9 for the health fair for older adults. That's going to be from 10 to 2 at Gold Miners End. And so she's very enthusiastic about this event and it's a great opportunity to meet over 50 different providers in our community that provide important services for our seniors as well as those with disabilities. We supported Supervisor Tucker in convening a meeting with Lake of the Pines, the specific issues around traffic issues at the intersection of the gate. And so staff is working with their team to see if we could change the timing of the lighting, the lights, the stoplights, to see how we could help improve the traffic flow. Mayors and managers, we had this last week, there's discussion on the county, city, and town regional meeting. So just a reminder to the board and to the public, that will be on October 30. Nevada City will be hosting the meeting and the topic will be housing. So I'll work with the chair to review that joint agenda to make sure incorporates any issues that the board would like to discuss with our city and town partners. And real-time update, that you've just reported that they talked to the CEO of the fair and there will be better Wi-Fi next year at the fair.
Awesome. That's great. That was an excellent point brought up this morning, so that's great.
That's a quick solution.
All right, I think we're ready now for you, Kit.
Okay, thank you, Chair Hall. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, County Council is requesting a closed session as follows. Public employment title of the position to be filled is County Counsel. And just for transparency and information, the interim Director of Human Resources, Susan Candera, will be the one conducting this session with the board members. The CEO and County Counsel will not be in the session, but will be there to receive direction ultimately.
Okay, thank you. And any public comment? Public comment on that? Closing public comment, thank you.
I believe we have someone on the phone.
Oh.
Yes, we do have one calling.
Okay, yes, please, let's take the call. Can we bring the caller in, please?
Hi, this is Matthew Coulter. I'm a member of the public and I know that it's hard to recognize that that's who you work for and that who is, you're doing what you're doing for. So when it comes to public comment during meetings, don't forget the 100,000-plus people that you guys are representing and that we have a voice and that you represent us. And in Heidi's comment about a upcoming meeting, "All are welcome at the Vets Hall," that's not true. I'd like you to add a disclaimer that I am not welcome, Matthew Coulter, to these meetings because, for example, the ICE meeting that the DA and the Sheriff's Department is putting on is seated with a Grass Valley City person, so therefore I cannot participate. It is not going to be broadcast, so no questions can be answered by the, asked by the general public. And this goes for many, many other meetings that are government meetings regulated by the Brown Act in many cases and that the public's access is being cut off. And related to that, I'm still looking for that list of closed-session items that the county does and what they are and what it's cost and the conclusion of these closed-session items that never seem to have a conclusion. They just go in, money's paid out, or something happens in the back room and nothing is ever said about what really happened. You report out a closed session, yes, something happened, but what? How much money was spent? What did it cost the taxpayers? What are we on the hook for? Because I'm being sued in closed session in Grass Valley and it just goes on and on. And it's a, it's a back-room deal thing and it's sad, it's very sad. This is what it's come to. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We're ready to go into closed session.
Okay, we're back and I'm going to ask Kit to read us out of session please.
Okay, having met in closed session on the county council position, direction was given to human resources and CEO to work up a contract for Trevor Kosky and bring that forward to the board at the next meeting.
Thank you.